We'd like to call the work session to order of August 16, 2022. Did trustee Wilson call in? The only one absent right now is Jimmy, but he may be in a little bit later because he works during the day as well. The first item, well, welcome everyone. And the first item on the agenda is an audited financial report. We have Raina Emmons from Post Smythe Lutzenzo with us.
Good evening. I'm happy to present tonight the audited financial statements for the Charter Township of Ypsilanti's audit as of December 31, 2021. It is an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of audit opinion possible. So in layman's terms, a clean audit opinion, no disclaimers, exceptions, nothing bad to report to you this evening. So I'm just going to start out with a few highlights. I know you have a full agenda, so I will try and hit the highlights for you. So starting off, property tax taxable values this year were up 3.8%, which we really like to see. It's very similar to the year before, so that was about just under 4%. So in the year, 3.8. So that was very consistent. The state shared revenue also up this year significantly, almost 13%. So it was about 12.9%. And that, of course, is from the sales tax and income tax that the state collects, and then they distribute down to the local units such as the township. It's looking like next year, they'll be in the, they're projecting, the state is projecting about an 11% increase, which is very, very strong for the state. I mean, we were bumping along at 2%, 3%. So, you know, nice to see that. Also, in your fiscal year 2022, so for next year, the state finally did the 2020 census adjustment, and that's part of the whole formula on state share revenue. So you will see a slight bump next year and going forward with that. After transfers out from the general fund to other funds, the general fund added $570,000 to the general fund fund balance. Ending fund balance is $7,976,000. Also, I'd like to tell you about the building department, how there was an increase in revenue this year from the prior year, and that just kind of gives you an indicator of how much activity is going on building-wise within the township from year to year. So that went up about, let's see, about 16% increase over the prior year. So a lot of, lot of activity in fiscal year 21. Also new this year in the financial statements is the American Rescue Plan Act funds. We received the first installment of two in fiscal year 21. You received the second one in fiscal year 2022, so you're only seeing half in the audit. You didn't spend any money in fiscal year 21 yet, so you just started in early 2022 actually spending money. So the money is in here. We actually have recorded it as in a separate fund, so it'll be easy to see the funds and track the activity of how that's spent. And that, the township will spend that, you'll have that spent by 2026 is the requirement. General fund did come in under budget this year, $945,000 under expenditures. The, also wanted to note this year, the fire department added $566,000 to their fund balance. But also of note is that now the, there is a separate fire capital fund for your fire capital millage. So that's in a completely separate fund now. It's not in the fire department fund, and also the fire pension millage in another separate fund. So those are not included as they had been in prior years. They are separated out. So look for those separately if you're curious in the audit. You paid down $790,000 in debt this year. That's principal paid and no new debt this year. Lastly, the pension funds, the net pension liability decreased $916,000 this year, which, you know, we love to see that. You had strong net investment income in the pension plan this year of 1.9 million. It was about 1.5 million the year before. Now, remember, we're reporting because of how the actuaries work a year prior. So these are, the actuarial numbers are as of December 31, 2020 in here. So the market value also is at 123120. So we did have strong net investment income in both the fire pension and the township pension plan. $3 million in the fire pension of net investment income, and the township plan was 2.2 million, consistent with the year before. Again, we like to see that. Of course, it depends on how the stock market ends the year each year, which significantly helps. The township ended at 72.9% funded in the pension plan, and the fire pension is 83.7% funded at the end of the year. Total other post-employment benefit liabilities were about 6.5 million combined with the township and the fire plan. So with that, if anyone has any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them this evening.
Board members, are there questions regarding the audit?
I don't have a question, just a comment. I went through the book and actually asked our accountant, Giovanna, some questions like the percentage for the general fund that you think is comfortable. And also, I noticed we have a lot of bonds that will be maturing soon that we're paying on, so that's a good thing as well. And so it was just, you know, Giovanna answered a lot of my questions, and I just wanted to, you know, commend you for the audit.
Oh, thank you very much. I did, I kind of caught some of those questions. I thought they were very, they were very good questions, very perceptive, and, you know, the township is doing just fine. And, you know, the things that I really like you to watch from year to year, which could really significantly fluctuate, are the pension plan. In, you know, they change the actuarial assumptions from year to year, that net investment income goes, comes and goes based on the stock market value. So that's, that's really what I'd like you to keep your eye on. You get great reports on a monthly basis, and that really, you know, when I come in at the end of the year and do the audit, I am not significantly changing your numbers at all. So that means you're getting good reports on a monthly basis, and that, you're making good decisions based on that. So I'm not coming in and changing everything. You have solid numbers all year long.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you so much, Raina, for doing that.
Thank you. Thank you to the staff, and Giovanna is a huge help, and of course, the board, we always really appreciate your support. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is license plate reader technology information being discussed by the Washoe County Sheriff. Derek Jackson is here, as well as Commander Florin.
Good evening, board. Thank you for having us and giving us an opportunity to share a little bit about the memo that Sheriff Clayton sent over to Supervisor Stumbo about a week ago that really lays out pretty clear from his perspective on his decision around license plate readers. I'm here today to add a little context, some clarity, speak to some of the facts around how we would or would not use the technology should you choose to move forward, and also to talk about the values that really drove that decision. But before I start, I just wanted to say that, I would state something that I think is pretty obvious, hopefully to most people, is that license plate readers alone by themselves, or police for that matter, are not the answer to the root cause of violence in our streets. I think that we all know that, but it's important that we talk about that, that we understand that there are long-term investments in community that need to be made, that there are community-driven strategies that have to really attack this issue that is crime or violence in our neighborhood. The sheriff often says that crime is not a police problem, right? We're one of the tools that helps to deal with crime, but it's not a police problem. It's a community problem. And so it's important that we have that context. I know that for some engagement in the way that we do it sometimes takes too long. It may seem like it's more difficult to really engage the community in conversations, but for us, it makes a lot of sense because it's all about principle-based decisions. And so these conversations, although sometimes take a little bit longer, it really makes the conversation easy for us. It comes back to the principles that the sheriff set out, the 11 questions that he set out in his original community educational series several weeks ago. So when LPRs were brought to the sheriff, the idea of the notion of LPRs to him has some strategic advantages. The technology can be used to do some good things around solving crimes faster, potentially getting criminals off the street, and lowering the potential rate of retaliation. I mean, just in the time that we started these last couple of weeks or a couple of months around the LPR community engagement strategies, what we found were four very serious crimes in our community that were solved thanks to LPRs and other communities around us. There was a murder that national media picked up because we watched a man die on social media. Many people know that story, but what they don't know is that part of what allowed us to arrest the person responsible was license plate readers down in Georgia that helped now bring him back to Michigan. So he's sitting in the Washoe County jail. There was a carjacking. There was another attempted murder. And then a lot of people know about this other one of the home invasion that happened where the three teenagers broke into the lady's house when she was asleep, stole the car, and lots of people know because it burst into flames at the end of that situation. But the part that a lot of people don't know is that as deputies saw that stolen vehicle and initiated a traffic stop, and they fled, and we began to pursue, the vehicle fled towards Van Buren Township, which has license plate readers, and the pursuit was called off in part because the deputy knew the technology was next door. And there was no need to continue to pursue. All they did was call over to Van Buren, give the license plate reader, and the technology did that dangerous work. Van Buren identified where the vehicle was, went to pull it over, the pursuit picked up again, and you know the end of the story here in Ypsilanti Township. But it's also really important to point out that the sheriff was just as clear on the constitutional considerations of how technology like this can be used in a very negative way, to focus disproportionately on communities of color, to focus on poor neighborhoods, to focus on a specific neighborhood in a particular township. That license plate readers in our research, and I think what a lot of people know, in patrol cars can be just damaging to communities, where an officer can sit outside a particular neighborhood with a license plate reader on his dashboard and can just run every single plate of someone leaving that neighborhood and pull them over. In essence, it becomes what some people call is a poor tax, too poor to have insurance. You get pulled over, you get a ticket, too poor to pay the ticket. Now you have a warrant, and the cycle just goes on and on and on, often what we talk about, and the cycle of insanity. When I think about that honestly, or think about us being used to do something like that, it makes me sick to my stomach. That is not what we're talking about here today. And so the things that we are talking about is something very different. But the question and the concept of is that possible is very legitimate. So with all that said, the sheriff and Supervisor Stumbo agreed that before any decision would be made, that we would do a series of community engagement events. And those events were not about us convincing the community this was good or bad. Many people would ask me, well, tell me what you think. Nope. We're here to listen, to understand, and to gain knowledge from the community around what the values are of using this. And I will say we learned a ton. We heard the community loud and clear when they said they did not want license plate readers to be used for minor traffic citations. And so we can clearly say we will not use LPRs for traffic violations. Part of what I'm laying out for you is really important for the board as you embark on your decision-making process, to know that these are some of the restrictions that Sheriff Clayton has been really clear about for us. If we were going to use the technology, these things can't happen. We heard people loud and clear when they talked about they didn't want license plate readers to be used for immigration enforcement, or for minor crimes, or for someone who had that traffic citation earlier who now can't pay for it to use a license plate reader to find them and make them pay those fines and fees. And so we will not use license plate reader technology to do those kinds of things. We also heard very loud and clear, though, that people are really concerned about the rise of violence in our community, and that people want things done, yes, the long-term solutions, so that people don't feel like they need to pick up a weapon, or to carjack someone, or rob them, or break into their home. But they also want immediate solutions. They want to make sure that the folks who are doing harm to our community are not on our streets. And that's that balance that we strike. We heard the community say they do not want specific neighborhoods targeted. We agree 100%. We would not use technology that would be targeted on a specific neighborhood or geographic area of the township. I know that's not what's been proposed or talked about, but I think it's important to make that very clear. We won't use LPR technology, and this is one that's important to me personally, but I've heard a lot of people talking about it, where the private companies can share information and your data with non-law enforcement-related activities. We won't do that. I think that's an important one also to point out. We understand that for some people, regardless of what we say, regardless of what our policy is, trust is a major issue, that they don't trust that the sheriff's office could stand up to these ideals that we lay out, that we verbalize and put in our policy, that they don't trust that the township will stand up to some of these ideals. I will say that for those who don't know, for over a decade now, the sheriff's office here in partnership with the township has used video camera technology spread across the township in a very similar way, different technology, but still camera technology. That I lived in West Willow when they went in, and I personally was a little bit sketchy about, oh, do we want cameras in here? And it was a resident who said, Derek, but you're not listening to the residents in what we're saying. And a few weeks after those cameras went up, yep, we solved a crime of someone tried to snatch a young lady in my neighborhood. And honestly, what that taught me was I have my own personal values, but in this conversation, it's not important necessarily what Derek thinks. It's really about listening to the community and what people are saying all across. In using that video camera technology, we do not have a deputy watching those cameras 24/7. We do not use that for minor traffic violations. We only use it for major crimes, and it's been helpful to have that technology. So all that said, if the township was to install the LPR system in alignment with these values and its limited scope, not patrol car-based cameras, not red light cameras, which by the way are illegal now, but for the record, should they ever become legal in Michigan, the sheriff has made it very clear, we will not utilize that technology. And I know I talked to Ms. Stumbo this morning, and she said the same thing. It's important for people to know that the township doesn't support using red light cameras. So all that being said, in this context, the sheriff would allow deputies to utilize the technology if it followed these values. The draft policy that people have seen, I just want to make it really clear that that draft policy can't be finalized until a specific vendor was selected or some really specific technology was identified, because there's just some small subtle things in there. So that's why it's still in a draft format. But a lot of the primary considerations are there, and that policy will be public-facing, so people will be able to see it and read it for themselves. There was a license plate reader community engagement report that was developed for the sheriff that really pulled in all the survey data, that pulled in the CES conversations, that pulled in the Neighborhood Watch conversations, that that will be made public here in the next couple of days, so people will see the survey results themselves. I can say without a doubt, most people did not want it who took that survey. It was pretty clear and over the top. But the survey itself, what it allowed us to do was to get context, to understand what were the reasons why people didn't want it, what were the comments that were associated with it. It wasn't scientific. There were some flaws in the methodology of getting it, but it did give us a lens and a window to help the sheriff make his ultimate decision. And finally, to me, I think it's really important that we had so much engagement. That's why we wanted to have this conversation. And I've had many conversations with people, some late night, some last night, where people don't agree with the sheriff having the stance here. I get it. But had we not had these community conversations, I don't think we at the sheriff's office would really understand what the limitations should be, what our community really wants to see and doesn't want to see, and to strike that balance to co-create public safety in the best way possible. So happy to answer questions if there are any. And with that, thank you.
Okay. Board members, are there specific questions?
Yes, I'd like to know, would there be? Oh. Oh. Is there a way to have a report monthly to monitor just what the LPRs are doing?
I'm glad you asked. I totally skipped that bullet point on my list, but again, as a part of, specifically for those who don't trust it, it really came from a community member who suggested, how do we do regularly occurring public reports that really show how it's been used, how often it's been used, what it's been used for? And again, making that regularly public-facing. So yes, absolutely. That's a part of the draft policy as well.
Oh, I was just going to say, will that be for the residents or just private information? Or how would that be accessed?
What you mean, if it's public-facing, so the residents will be able to see it themselves and have access to it themselves? As far as the information that would be contained in it, obviously, we wouldn't be putting people's names or addresses, or saying it was this particular license plate, but really a high-level report on how it was used, when it was used, those kinds of things.
Okay. Thanks.
Other?
Derek, can you just explain how you'll be able to, as an apartment, monitor when a deputy or an employee goes in, and will they be readily identified through specific codes to get in, so you'll be able to track?
Yeah.
Who does what, when they do it, why they do it on a real-time basis?
Yeah, yeah. So we'll all have our own individual logins, just like when I log into the county network or to the Lean Information Network, and it's trackable by if Derek Jackson logged in, if I ran Supervisor Stumbo's license plate, like all those things would show up, and so this system would be the same. And within the policy, if you read through it, it talks about the quality assurance, not just that we can track that, but there's someone who's actually monitoring that, looking at how many times a deputy is going in there, what kinds of things are they looking at, and again, making those, part of those reports public, so the folks in the community can see what are we even using that technology for. And I want to stress again, first of all, we've got too much to do in Ypsilanti Township to be focused on traffic citations of individuals, those kinds of things, right? It really is going to be about, just like the video camera system is, very serious crimes. The four crimes I laid out in this very short window that we were engaging are just examples of the real life. There were many more crimes that you could put into an LPR system, but that's not our values, or our focus, or our philosophy. And so that's why we highlight the very serious crimes, because that's how we would use it. And if by example, if you also refer further in a policy, there is accountability if a deputy was to misuse the system. There's accountability for that as well.
Other questions?
Madam Chair?
Trustee.
Derek, I have three questions. Try to do it briefly. I know you've been at many residents' meetings, and my question is, is how many people would you say have been at those residents' meetings?
Yeah, that's hard to say. I will say, so beyond the Neighborhood Watch meetings, we got lots of calls and lots of individual conversations, but also some separate, kind of small group meeting conversations. I didn't track how many people we spoke to. For many of you who go to some of the Neighborhood Watch meetings, you might even know better than I, like how many regularly attend. It just depends on the neighborhood. So it's hard. I'm sorry, I don't have a direct number for you on how many.
Would you say that you went to all the Neighborhood Watch meetings?
So we did go to all the Neighborhood Watch meetings, yeah, that were happening. They were scheduled, and I think that's the entire calendar of Neighborhood Watch meetings in the entire township.
Okay. And the other question is, the 30-day data that you capture, I think it also indicates that it could stay if you need to do some more investigation, 90 days. Is that correct?
Yeah, so just to, for context, so people know what we're talking about. So first of all, these license plate readers only capture the license plate that we put in there, right? And so the license plates are active at all times, but we have to put a specific plate in, just like Van Buren did of the home invasion and car theft. And then it starts looking for that specific plate. So it's not looking for your plate if you're not involved in a crime, or we didn't put it in there, only for specific people that have committed serious crimes. And then it's stored in there automatically for 30 days, and it's automatically deleted. However, you can imagine that there may be cases that go on for longer than 30 days, just like the video camera system we have now, and we need to keep that and retain that evidentiary information for longer. So we can manually go in if needed related to the case and keep that for longer than 30 days if we need to.
Okay. The other part I was getting to, though, how would someone know that it was deleted? How would they know after 30 days that you actually deleted this information?
So I think this is some of the considerations for the board as you pick out a particular vendor, is the technology. How is it actually deleted, and how do you know that it's actually deleted? So our parameters are, we would have that information for no longer than 30 days, but getting into the technological pieces, I just can't answer that now because I know a vendor hasn't been selected, and we haven't really talked at that depth, so I don't have that answer.
And my last question is, I see you have a policy, and if this is passed, I want to know if the sheriff department will post this policy at all times on their website. I think this is very important to the residents, be able to see what your policy is behind this program.
So the quick answer is yes. And so you'll see on our website, right on the front, there's a link to public policies. And so there's already a list of policies that are public. This would be another one that would be there. We have not listed it now because it's in draft format, but when it's finalized, and again, it would be finalized upon a decision by the board on like who the vendor would be, and maybe some very specific minor changes would be made, but that will remain there as a public-facing policy. Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions from board? Trustee Swanson.
First, I want to say thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Derek. And then I have two questions. So the first one is, we had, at a Neighborhood Watch, the question was asked that would it be possible for there to be like a community oversight committee? And it was mentioned that the sheriff's department already has a community oversight committee or a group. I might be calling it the wrong name. And the thought was maybe it would be, that might be the committee. So what are your thoughts around that possibility?
So cable of the Citizen Advisory Board on Law Enforcement, I think it's a great idea. I wish they would have said that during the session when I was there, but yes, I think it would be a great idea for there to be citizen eyes and lenses on this. And again, making the report public is part of even getting beyond our Citizen Advisory Board and getting out to the larger community so people can see for themselves. And so people will be at this podium and this mic if you have a specific deputy who's using the system in a wrong way or an erroneous way, or when you see certain kinds of crimes, if you were able to see them that we have already said we wouldn't do, you'll be able to see that as the general public and make a comment on it, and you know. So it will be a more public process, I think, than other things that we have.
Okay. And then the second question is about this idea of cooperation. So I know that police servicing in Washoe County, there's a lot of cooperation, especially in our area with other municipalities. And so I'm wondering, when we had the incident happen in our community, we had to input something in to then allow Van Buren to help us with that. So if there were a municipality, and if we were to go forward, that did not wish to have a violent crime processed through LPR, is there a way for that to happen, or once we get started, if that happens? So again, there's no decision that's been made, but I'm just wondering about this idea because police share services and try to help each other all the time. But if there was a municipality that didn't want that to happen, they didn't want an LPR used to solve a violent crime, is there a way for that to be, to not happen?
I think I'm following you. I would say, like in our case with Van Buren, we just put, be on the lookout to Van Buren and say, here's the license plate, and they take it and use it in their system as they see fit in Van Buren and give us the information. If someone was in Ypsilanti Township, if you passed the ordinance or a policy that said we couldn't use it, or and really encouraged the sheriff not to use it, then I think that there is the ability for people not to do it. If it was their policy not to use LPRs, then we wouldn't use them. So I'm not sure if that answers your question, but if it was our policy not to use LPRs, then we, our deputies would not be calling to Van Buren if there was a specific policy saying that they should not do that.
And if the, so my question is more about a community that maybe we share and help. If they decided they didn't want LPRs used, then they would have the ability not to have that done, because you're saying that we put out the, be on the lookout for. Van Buren took the be on the lookout for and then put it in their system. So it sounds like there'd have to be some kind of an understanding that there was a community, they would.
I think if there was a jurisdiction.
If we got to be on the lookout, then maybe if we had agreed to do this, then it would just be the old technology for trying to solve that particular crime.
Yeah, maybe I'm a little confused because I'm not quite following, but I would say again, if Yeah, maybe I'm a little confused because I'm not quite following, but I would say, again, if another entity's policy was that they can't use LPR technology, that would be that entity's policy not to utilize it. And I would assume that those officers would then not be asking to use someone else's LPR technology, just as if it was our policy and our deputies couldn't, then we would not, our deputies would not be asking to use that technology in another community, if I'm following correctly.
Yeah, just because we assist. I mean, we get reports from the police department all the time where we're assisting other communities. And so some of those are Sheriff Department contacts, and other of those are entities that have their own police department.
But to be clear, that wouldn't be our policy. So that would have to be those officers in another jurisdiction following their own policy. But if they asked us moving forward with this policy, we would utilize the LPRs in the right circumstance. We would not utilize the LPRs if another entity said, hey, I got a traffic warrant that I want you to use your LPR to find it. No, we would not do that. But if it's a serious crime, someone was shot, there was a homicide, someone just broke into someone's house, you know, those kinds of things, then we would utilize it. If they had a policy not to utilize technology, that would be on them to follow their own policy.
Other question?
Yes, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Thank you for the presentation, Derek. I think most of my questions are probably more for any potential vendor as far as the technology is concerned. But I guess my only question for you would be, this policy was put together by the sheriff? Was there anyone else involved in putting this policy together? Is this pretty much his policy?
So we often share the policy with, so let me say this. It was community feedback that drove a lot of the considerations in the policy. It was also our internal research of looking around the country at what works and what doesn't work. The sheriff has been really clear, I think from the start of this, that we will not have in-car license plate readers. So that was just a, you know, line in the sand, and there were some real reasons of why. I think the policing project was who laid out the process that you should go through if you're going to use this. And if you don't know about the policing project, I would Google it and kind of read on some of their stances on some of this. So as far as I know, that was the limits of it. I know the sheriff personally, I didn't ask him this, but who he talked to about the policy and all that, I just don't have that answer to you.
Okay, all right. And I guess my only concern would be is, knowing our sheriff, I think that as long as he is in his position, this policy will stay in place. The only concern I would have is if there's a new sheriff in town, no pun intended, that policy can change. And so we can't guarantee these policies. I think this policy is solid the way it's written, but unfortunately, positions change. And the position is an elected position, therefore, no matter who is the next sheriff, I don't. My only concern is that maybe the policy ends up changing in a way that won't benefit the community. So that's my only comment. Thank you, though.
Yeah, and just real quick, I would just say that I agree with you, right? My position may not exist as the Director of Community Engagement, should we get a sheriff who disagrees with the kind of work that we do. So I feel that personally. But I would also say that that doesn't prevent us from doing the good work and making principled decisions. And so going through this process, laying it out for our current reality of where we are now, we base that on not, do we get pushed this way or the wind blows this way? But real, principled-based, mission-driven, community-focused approaches. And so that's how this decision was made. You're right, a new sheriff could come in and change everything about the sheriff's office. Not just his policy, but could change other things pretty dramatically. That is really up to the voters. And I would say, just as engaged as people were in this conversation, I bet that they would be really engaged in a next sheriff's election, but also should a new sheriff come in and start to try to do things differently. Part of my job every day for the last 14 years has been to make sure that the nuts and bolts are put together in a place in Washtenaw County, that a new sheriff can't come in and just arbitrarily start to demolish things. It's possible, but to make sure we put things in place that are principle-based, it makes it much more difficult. And for a new sheriff to come in, that means the people would have had to agree to allow something like that to happen. And I just can't see that happening in Washtenaw County. Possible, but I can't imagine that would happen.
Other question?
So if I'm understanding this, if we were to do this, this is an agreement, a shared agreement between the Sheriff's Department and Ipsy Township. If there were a new sheriff, it just seems to me like they can't just change an agreement we have with them, or maybe that's got to be part of the agreement, because it's a shared agreement. So a new person.
Yeah. I was gonna say, part of this is, yeah. It would be the township's technology, we're your police service provider, and we would utilize that technology. So you all obviously would be selecting who a vendor was and looking at the kind of technology and the capabilities that could happen or could not happen. And our policy would be how we would utilize that or not utilize that. So whether a new sheriff came in or not, there's certain things that you just don't have in your technology. It's not even possible for them to do it, as in red light cameras or cameras in patrol cars, those kinds of things.
Other question?
Yes, I have a question and a comment. To my, to my knowledge, if the LPRs are to be placed around the township, they don't watch a lot of the cars coming in unless the license plate is input into the system. In other words.
Alert.
Yeah, it doesn't watch all of the cars and go through all of the license plates at that time.
So it would only identify what we put into the system to say, here's what we need you to look for? It would then start to look for those things. That makes sense. So it is awake and seeing cars pass by, but it is only giving alerts and looking at and identifying specific vehicles, license plates, or vehicle characteristics, like a bike rack or a particular color license plate, those kinds of things. It does not have facial recognition, so it can't look at a face and tell race or gender or anything like that. It doesn't have that ability. This is not even a part of the LPR technology.
And my question is, will the sheriff's office be involved in the process of selecting a vendor or gathering information, at least asking questions?
I think I would really put that back to you all as you design the process, but as your law enforcement provider, I believe so.
Thank you.
They were with the cameras in the neighborhood. I mean, very, it's a partnership and.
Madam Chair, Derek, thank you for being here tonight. I think you've answered a lot of my questions, but I just wanted to reiterate what I think I heard. The first is that these are not intended to ever be used for minor traffic violations, expired tags, things of that nature.
Correct.
The other was that all of the people who will have access to this will have like their own username, login, password, so that there's like a paper trail of who's accessed the technology or not.
Correct.
The deletion of the data, which I know Trustee Peterson asked about, and I know there's some questions about the vendor being selected, but generally speaking, it would be 30 days, it's out of the system. And then if it was still an ongoing unsolved situation, you could re-put that license plate back into the system for it to come back up for the 90 days.
It doesn't get deleted. If we want it to stay because we're still looking for it or evidentiary needs, then it's just a click of a button to keep it in there longer than the 30 days.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question that I didn't think you touched on yet in this, again, could be, you know, depending on a lot of things, if this moves forward and what vendor was selected. But what would the training look like for the officers? And then would it just be the deputies that would log in or only the lieutenants? Or have you and Sheriff Clayton discussed any of that at all?
So I think the training is gonna be a part of, if there was a decision made to proceed and who the vendor was, what that technology needs are, what's the interface like. But similar to our video cameras, that there are deputies who have access and who are trained to use it. And then command staff obviously would have that same training and access.
Okay. And then I guess just a follow-up to that is, you would, I assume, do ongoing training for anyone who's like moving from a deputy position to a command position or anything like that?
Yeah, absolutely. And for some reason, if the technology was to change or be upgraded, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Could you tell us currently, how do you do a be on the lookout alert that goes out? Just so, we asked that question at the Police Services meeting on Monday, and I was surprised at.
Yeah, you know, with the advent of technology and the way that it is today, some people would say it's antiquated, right? You put a be on the lookout, it just depends on the deputy, right? Write it down, put it on your dashboard, put it in your little paper pad or just have it in your memory if you're looking for it. And so right now, it's just person dependent on how it would be done. A be on the lookout with the LPRs, obviously, it goes into the system and the system is doing the work. The other part related to this, and we haven't talked a lot about it, because we would need to see for ourselves, but just like the case with the pursuit, the ability to have less contact with the officer unless there needs to be contact, right? Like the LPR hitting on a particular car with a license plate, make and model, versus a deputy thinking that they see that car or thinking there's a white minivan, let me pull over the white minivan. Those are two very different abilities. So it'd be interesting to see what that looks like, say, six months, a year from now. Does it really limit or eliminate that from happening? But I know it's already just having them in Van Buren, changed some of our deputies' perspective of pursuing someone, obviously, into Van Buren.
So who currently, if you get a be on the lookout from another community, where does that go into dispatch and then it's sent out via email? Or how is that? Do you know?
Well, dispatch can put it out over the radios for people. It can actually go into the lean information network system, Law Enforcement Information Network, so it's listed there. Like if there's a stolen vehicle or something like that. So there's a number of ways that a deputy can get it. They can get it at briefing. Maybe the shift prior to them arriving on shift has a specific vehicle that was stolen or they're looking for. And so the sergeant in their briefing gives it to individuals before they walk out the door.
So all the deputies are like driving and looking for, is that?
Potentially, yes.
I mean, is that, I was trying to understand how the current process is. I know there's be on the lookout all the time.
There are lots of BOLs. I mean, sometimes there are just BOLs for, someone may think that there's a distracted driver on the highway or a drunk driver who just got off on the, you know, Washtenaw or something like that. So there's a number of different reasons why there might be a be on the lookout, but they are happening quite often.
Okay. And you notify, if we have an incident, we notify who? Like Van Buren or?
Depending on what that incident is, like in this case, if we thought someone was fleeing in that direction, like it's gonna go out all over the place. If there's a, you know, homicide or an active shooter or something like that, you can imagine, right, that it goes out even to a wider breadth. So it really just depends on the crime and where it's going or potentially headed.
So there's not certain agencies that you send it out to? It is, just depends on the direction of the vehicle?
Well, it could depend on it. Like in this case, we specifically reached out to Van Buren, because they were heading into Van Buren. Hey, Van Buren, be on the lookout for this. If it was going, say, out towards Chelsea, we would probably reach out towards Chelsea. So it just depends on the situation.
So when the shooter in West Willow, I mean, it was what, 4 o'clock during the day? Shot and killed someone that was Facebook videotaping live? Did they catch, how did the Georgia know that you were looking for that suspect and that vehicle?
So because that case is still going on, I don't want to get too deep into it, but I will say that we put information out looking for this particular license plate.
Okay.
And so that's how, so it went out to a larger network of law enforcement agencies to look for this particular license plate.
Okay, all right. And I respect that totally and how that happened. My understanding that the U of M campuses or the parking garage has license plate readers? Are you aware of that? And do you think we could get that policy and see how they handle that information or?
I'm not aware that they have it or not and how they use it, so we did not look into their policy. I know that there are certain neighborhoods, like homeowners association, I'm told in the township that have them. We don't use them currently, but I'm told that individual neighborhoods may have LPRs as well. So I don't know the specifics on that, but there are probably a couple of specific places around the county that have them. But as far as I understand, Van Buren is the closest one to us that we're aware of that has license plate reader technology.
And they have a policy as well? Have you looked at that or not yet?
I didn't look at it. I'm not sure if other people have. I would just say, our values may be different, our rationale may be different. And so we laid out our own process for looking at and then come into a conclusion based on feedback from our community versus theirs. So Van Buren may see this a little bit different, their policy may be different than ours and how they use it.
I know on the news, they had a 26-year-old woman who had been ran over by a vehicle in Van Buren Township. And they said they use a license plate reader technology to find the person who did that, and they were arrested. Are you familiar with that incident?
Just through the news, media, not through work or really just seeing it myself. And again, there's the balance of like, yep, it can do some really great things. But if you have in your policy or you don't have the procedures or protocols in place, it could do a lot of harm as well. And so really making sure you can do both. You can reduce the harm while also getting dangerous people off the street. And then we think that that's what we've been able to do with all the feedback and research and communication we've had, is to really reduce the likelihood of harm while at the same time being able to use it to solve serious crimes.
In the 14-point presentation at the County Board of Commissioners on how to address the violence and specifically the shooting, they said that 85% of it is retaliation. And I thought I heard you say, or speak to, this technology could help remove the person sooner, which helps with the retaliation. Did I hear that correct?
Potentially it could, right? So yes, so just so people know, there's the Community Violence Intervention Team has put out 14 recommendations of things that we could do now to stop or end gun violence in our community. And one of those data points it talks about is upwards of 85% of shootings in our county are retaliatory in nature. And so my comment, as I was speaking earlier, was if you can remove the suspect off of the street, there's less likelihood that someone is trying to find him and retaliate. So that was really what my point was.
Okay, all right, thank you. And if I heard you, the survey results and all that data will be present, available in a couple of days. So I just want the audience to know that we don't have it either, but we'll be getting it from you.
Yep, that full report will be public and people can see for themselves the data. Like I said before, it was pretty overwhelming that people who responded to the survey didn't want it. And then you could also see some of the comments of the whys behind it.
Okay, and then the survey allowed people to comment or vote more than once? Is that correct?
Well, it wasn't scientific, so, so yeah, I mean, potentially someone could have. We, whether they did or didn't, I mean, we just took the comments and took it into consideration, what they said into our final decision. So, but it could be possible for someone to sit there if they really wanted to.
And also, did it determine, was it a township resident or was it other residents that were responding to the survey?
So we did add that question. At the original night, it didn't have that question, but we did add that question. So people self-selected if they were township resident or not.
Okay.
Yes, Treasurer Aldrich?
Derek, there's been a lot of discussion and back and forth about would an LPR system reduce crime? And I think it's hard sometimes to quantify what didn't happen because you have a system. However, as you're aware and the board's aware, we have LPRs at one of our local apartment complexes, a large one on the west side of the township. And over the last two years, in those weekly meetings with law enforcement personnel, I think it's fair to say we're all shocked, dismayed at the high number of incidents taking place within those complexes. There were two. Since that move to put LPRs in there by that private owner of those complexes, is it fair to say that the number of responses for police services has gone down?
So I'm not probably the best person to answer that question, to be honest, because I don't know the specific data related to that particular place. But one of my earlier statements around LPRs alone, the solution to our root causes, was about this. The idea that, yes, there's technology that can help in some ways, but it's much more that needs to go into it than just the simple technology. How you use the tool is really, really important. So I don't know the specific data points, honestly, but that's why I mentioned that earlier on, that I think it really, really is important around how the tool is used. It really, to me, drives to, can you actually start to reduce crime? There's a lot of other things that need to be done to really get down to the root causes.
I just have one other question, because I know residents are here that want to ask questions too. And like Heather said, thank you for coming on and Commander Flores. I attended all the Zoom, they were Zoom meetings and one on the Neighborhood Watch. And there wasn't as many residents on Zoom as there are in person, you know, because of the COVID and stuff like that. But I do think. But I do think that they asked questions and your presentation was given, and I think that helped, but I'm not sure. It really expanded the community engagement part because it was by Zoom. So, you know, you did go to every one of them, the presentation was given, and there were residents there, but I don't think there was a, well, like last night at West Willow, they had it in person.
Yeah.
And there was over 20 residents there. So it's, that's a different way to exchange information than on Zoom. I know a lot of people like Zoom and it's helpful to some, but having direct community engagement, I think, you know, is.
Best way to do it.
Me personally, is a better way of really getting the feedback and feeling the pulse of the community. But I do appreciate all the time that was put into it because you started, what month did you start?
Oh, wow. When do we, I can't remember if we did the first one. At least two to three months ago, maybe?
March or April.
March, April.
Yeah, so there was a lot, several of them. And I also, my understanding is that Michigan does not allow you to write traffic tickets, the state of Michigan. Like you can go in Ohio and all of a sudden you get a ticket, or you can go through a toll booth in Ohio and get a, a ticket, the same in Georgia. But the state of Michigan currently does not allow that. Is that information correct?
It is correct. And again, if red light cameras or that stuff was accessible, the sheriff has been really clear that we wouldn't use it.
Okay. But I do think it's important because someone at the meeting last night said, well, on Facebook, it said that they're going to write tickets, but, you know, that's not a real verified source is Facebook. So I just want to make sure that residents know that this does not and will not write tickets.
And so you're correct, but it's also true that like it's not our job to go out there and try and convince people one way or the other. So you don't see us responding to some of those things. I think misinformation can be a dangerous tool, but also some of the questions were very legitimate, like people were concerned about privacy rights, people were concerned about red light cameras, those kinds of things. But to your point, you're absolutely right. Some of those questions don't relate to this conversation because it was never a part of even the proposal in the first place. And so it's hard sometimes to decipher through what's accurate and what's not accurate, which is partly why I'm here today, is just to really clarify and offer some facts. As we did the presentations in person, Zoom, one-on-one, phone calls, even people who came in who were really upset about even the concept or idea of having Big Brother watching their license plates, to a person, as we started to have the conversation, people understood the facts, they're like, oh, you mean this isn't going to be used? Are you sure you're not going to do it? Well, yes, we are sure. It changes the dynamic when people have the facts. Now, based on the facts, the community can make their own decision. So I think that's just a really important component. And it's really hard to have that community-wide conversation with everyone, but we do our best to get out there, to answer the questions, to answer the phone when people have the questions. So, yeah, so absolutely.
Yeah, I just transparency and accountability is, you know, very important in every process that we do. So having correct information is necessary, you know, and we haven't really had the opportunity because we were waiting for you to do a presentation and gather more information, you know, on your research and stuff. So this has been helpful in order to gather more community input as we make the decision. And I think that concludes the questions that I have for right now, based on your presentation. And if, can you stay around for a few more minutes and have residents ask questions of you if they would like at this time? The residents can, do you have time?
I have time. I'm going to sit around for the board meeting. I will say this, that, and people can have my phone, we can talk all day about LPRs. Our goal is to just provide you the process we went through and the facts as we see them and say to you that yes, if it was used in this very limited way, we would utilize the technology.
Okay. All right, I got you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, if citizens of Ipsy Township would like to make comments, just state your name and if you're a township resident or not.
I'm Charmant Spicer. I just have two questions related to everything that we discussed. The first one is, in the way that it was explained, if we had new leadership in the sheriff's office, that could change how this is used. By that same, in that same vein, how much, once the, like, let's say this all goes through, the policies are established, the readers are purchased, how will it change things or could it? It's about fear here and worry if the leadership that agreed on one thing in the township changes township leadership? Because Derek referred to values, and I'm not making any assumptions that we all share the same values, but I hear more about the values in the sheriff's office. So I'm just wondering, that's my one question. Does the township have the power to go in and say if there's new elected officials, oh, we changed our minds, now we do want it to be used for this? So that's one, probably for you. And then the other one is Derek was really specific and started off with addressing how the root causes of crime are what really are responsible for crime. And one of my fears is that when bodies or organizations get a system like this, sure it helps, like I'm glad that they caught the person who murdered the other guy, but that's not addressing the root causes. And as a taxpaying resident of Ipsy Township, I'd like the opportunity to sit down with the budget sometime for all of us and say, ask the sheriff's office, who I think could address it along with other people, how could we put some of our taxpayer dollars into addressing the root causes? Because I'd feel better if I knew we were doing that, and right now I don't feel like I know how we're doing that, so.
Thank you. That's it.
I just have a couple of comments. One thing, the issue of accountability in the idea that.
Sir, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Okay. I just have a couple, a couple of comments. One issue is the idea of accountability and the concern about people logging in and there being a paper trail and all that. We know in our, in, in, in police in general, that accountability is a major concern. And so just telling us that it won't be misused, or if a deputy misuses it, there will be accountability, tells us nothing. What we need to know is exactly how that person will be held accountable. Will they no longer be allowed to use the system? Will they lose pay? Will they be fired? What is, is there a union that's, that's going to stand up and protect these officers if they start misusing this? We know, there's no question that the, that this sort of thing happens all the time. So that's one thing is I think just saying there's accountability doesn't mean there is going to be accountability. It's a little, a touch disingenuous to say this is a, a community transparent decision because on the one hand, you're telling us that we, we have say in how these are being used, but you're also telling us the sheriff's office is writing the policy. So I, I think we need to be very clear about lines of authority and about who's deciding how these things are actually going to be used. Also, I think I would like to know more about how this is going to be funded. Is this, is there going to be a millage used to pay for this? If there is a millage that's going to be used to pay for this, will there be a vote across the township? I have concerns about that. I'm, I also, it seems to me that the, the meetings, the, the neighborhood meetings are being given a lot of weight by the township in terms of taking the pulse. And I think, I don't think everyone in the township is aware of how the board is using these township meetings necessarily, or even that there are these neighborhood meetings and that they're being used to explore policies and, and, and to gather information and make decisions on policies, that they're really more than Neighborhood Watch meetings, that they're extensions of these board meetings essentially. So I think that there needs to be some sort of clarity, there needs to be, people need to know how these Neighborhood Watch meetings are being used in terms of deciding policy, making decisions, because it's not a representative sample necessarily of a neighborhood. It's of those people who decide to go to the Neighborhood Watch meetings.
Sir, what was your name?
Is Ralph Johnson.
And you live in Ipsy Township?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So.
I want to say that, the limit's three minutes.
Oh, okay.
I should have said that at the beginning. I'm so sorry, but I should have said that. And the questions that are being asked, we will address them. We're going to listen, we're listening to what people are saying right now.
Hello, thank you. I'm Gregor Langbein. I'm a township resident. First, appreciate the sheriff's office for implementing or trying to create limited policies on how to use this stuff. My main concern is hiring these startup companies like, say, Flock to come in and install the cameras and have all of our data go up to their cloud and then down to us. Once it hits their cloud, they own it, and we are now the product, and we're not their customer, we're the product. And they can sell that data off to whoever. McDonald's could want to know how the foot traffic or the traffic on a corner somewhere, they could go buy it from Flock. FBI, CIA, they could go get it from Flock. If that touches a cloud server that's not owned by the township here, that data is gone, it's no longer ours to own. So that is my primary concern with that. And yes, and as the sheriff's department said, I am very worried that this will affect marginalized communities more than, say, other communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tad Weiser, 610 North Miami in the township and, and a member of the We Rock Faith Labor Community Organizing Project. And just, want to just make the observation that, you know, you know, as, as the sheriff has said, as Derek shared about, you know, crime is a community problem, regardless of what happens with this, this is pretty amazing to me how many people have, are paying attention. And the more of us that are getting to know each other, working together, learning together, acting together, any number of problems start getting fixed. So regardless of what happens, I think we're already on a path here of solving some problems just by bringing more of us together, more love, less fear. And I just want us to keep doing that regardless of how this goes. And filling up this room every time there's an important decision is a healthy thing, and we should be seeking to repeat that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Derek, and thanks to the board.
My name is Karen Holman. I'm a township president. I want to thank Tad for his words of love. And I want to address the issue that Derek brought up about the sources of crime and community. And I, I can't, and the word disingenuous came up, and I can't help but be puzzled in that the township is being really, you know, listens very carefully to vendors, and yet guns are the source of, you know, murderous violence and suicide, and yet we allow this gun range to come in despite what, you know, the community said. And it seems like if, if we really are, if the township really is concerned about violence, that is a core thing. Now, the city of Ypsilanti, somebody on their planning commission in 2017 made a decision to zone against gun businesses and also nudie bars, right? And so if the township is really concerned about crime instead of these, you know, surveillance techniques, maybe they could be more proactive about things like gun miss businesses. Another thing I want to bring up is there was a big outcry, there were security cameras put in my neighborhood, most of the residents didn't want to, although maybe the Neighborhood Watchers did. There was a, we were taxed, and I'm not sure if that was a violation of the Headley Amendment because it wasn't voted unofficially, and yet we are taxed for those cameras that we didn't want. So I just have some questions and concerns about, you know, the idea of the township seems to be really pro-surveillance, but when it comes to other methods, you know, of building a community, I'm not seeing as much of that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Jean Buchard. I live in Van Buren Township and frequently work in Ypsilanti Township. Two questions. Are, are LPRs a tool that the sheriff's department would use to cooperate with a state or federal BOLO? Or would they only be used for BOLOs generated within the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Department or within neighboring sheriff's departments with license plate readers? Second question. It was mentioned that these would only be used to pursue perpetrators of serious crimes. Serious crimes is a moving target, and I'm worried about whether, especially if state law changes. I know that I have the utmost faith in our Washtenaw County prosecutor, and I know that our Washtenaw County sheriff, the current one, would not do this, but I worry about whether Washtenaw County and Ypsilanti Township and Van Buren Township could be compelled to share LPR data with the state if abortion is severely restricted, if that would be considered a severe crime.
Hi there, Chris Tebbins. I'm in Ypsilanti Township President. I just kind of want to piggy, I forgot your name, I missed it. Gregor. I just want to kind of piggyback off of that. So I know that we, like, it hasn't been officially a selected, like, company as to like who would be the private provider of any cameras, but I was doing a little bit of research on, like, Flock today, so they've gone through several rounds of private venture capital funding, which would mean that it's kind of at the end of where they're at, they're looking to probably go public at some point. Part of going public is, you know, they have to generate revenue, and again, these hedge funds are out there and the old private, like, venture capital funds, they, they're not really worried about so much, you know, community safety or community, like, like privacy, they're worried about how they can generate the funds and where that revenue comes from and how they can get their stock price out. And so I'm just worried, you know, I mean, all the privacy issues aside, I'm worried more about the long term as like how these companies are going to, in the long term, take our data and use it for themselves. So, yeah, I just want to carry on with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm called Chuck. I live in the city of Ypsilanti, about 30 feet from township. I am curious, and perhaps Derek would be willing to answer this now, if someone had driven through and then done crime, can they look at it retroactively since it's always looking? Is it always remembering? And then I feel as a city kid, kind of odd that y'all are trying to build a moat around us without seeking any input. Like, it's y'all's money, but that's an Orwellian moat, and I don't dig it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, would you like to go?
Is this my call?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Great. I'm Gail Summerhill. I'm here on behalf of Ypsilanti County Sheriff. I am a township resident, so that makes me A1. Okay. I have many concerns, and the first concern that I have is on the agenda. The agenda where it says public comment, it says all comments must be addressed to the chair. If I'm here for the first time, how would I know who the chair is that I'm supposed to be speaking to? Ypsilanti County Sheriff makes sure that we provide. Ypsie Can I Share makes sure that we provide information to people who are purposely excluded. So going forward, I would suggest on the agenda, because it really looks like a dictatorship from what I see, that only a person can address the chair when we're having an open mic that everybody can hear. So that's the first thing. Secondly, I'm looking around the room, and it's not full. The question that the board should be asking themselves is why for such a hot topic? I can answer that. People did not receive the memo. It wasn't a timeframe. If you wanted comments from the community, then I don't understand why you don't have Zoom to make sure that everyone
Please stop.
is able to hear firsthand from a board. For those municipalities that have chosen not to use Zoom as a regular, that leaves question for the community, what are you trying to hide? Because if the county commissioners now have open and poorest district in Ypsilanti has Zoom, then I suggest that the first priority needs to go to Zoom to make sure. ARPA dollars are there and certainly can be used for making sure that all residents are aware of what's going on, and people who are making decisions for us excluding those that are going to be most affected. It is my understanding that elected officials work for the people. So I think that it's time, as our organization has been empowering people because they did not know that, that they do have a voice, they do have a stake in every single decision that's being made from where they live. And we have not done a very good job collectively to empower the people that were purposely excluded.
Thank you.
With that being said, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Aiden Ross, thank you. I'm from Ypsie Township as well, up Whittaker Road over here. I would like to kind of build off of everybody else's concerns with a couple of questions. First of all, I would like to know if any, any real cost benefit analysis of the efficiency of these LPRs has been done? Because they, my understanding is that they, the 60-camera system that we're talking about putting in will cost 75, no, sorry, $150,000, which I believe is roughly as much as two sheriff's deputies. Oh, which I believe is roughly as much as two sheriff's deputies, I'm not 100% certain on those numbers. But to, this isn't purely scientific, but to compare it to the system in Belleville, they've had it in 2022, and they have a 30-camera system which is $75,000 a year, and it, it has caught two people. And while, while I'm glad that, you know, these, these people have been caught in these incidents, and they were clearly doing bad things, I wonder, I would like to have answered before the township moves forward with this, if it's efficient just in those raw numbers. Another thing I would like to ask is, with, with the concerns about the stuff going up to the internet, what can be done if these systems get hacked, as a lot of internet, internet-based stuff does? I feel that we have to assume that once something is on the internet, it is on there forever. And once one hole is poked in the side of every security of the system, more will be poked in the future because it will be demonstrated that it can be done. So I would like to ask the board to consider, consider that going in. And this has, this last point has been, I think, asked a couple of times before, but I trust the township and the sheriff's department that we have now, but that's no guarantee that we're going to have the same level-headedness and consideration in the future, especially in these uncertain times. So what, what can be done to really guarantee that these, that these cameras won't be misused or that the, the restrictions on them won't be with, won't be washed away bit by bit? That's about everything I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening, my name is Desiree Simmons, I'm in the city of Ypsilanti, just a few more feet away than who spoke earlier. I just want to start off by saying that, as we talk about robust public engagement, it shouldn't only be focused on which municipality is paying to play the game, the city of Ypsilanti will also be surrounded by these cameras, and there is not a concerted effort to get representation from those who will be most impacted by the daily presence of the cameras. While the presentation said that the cameras would only be able to go if somebody put in a license plate or characteristics, I think about, like, they have to constantly be on. When I heard about the presentation somewhere else, it actually said that they are, they take a picture of all of the license plates, those are what's held, but that those will be checked against a hot list. But even outside of that, how specific does, you know, the characteristics have to be to go in, you know, when you're saying a gray car with a dent on the back, you know, that's a lot of cars in Michigan? I would also say that a lot of times you don't actually have an exact license plate, so what about those instances, how would this be helpful? It's easy to focus on the so-called pros, but what about the real-life impact to those who wind up experiencing the cons? We know that the carceral impact can be wide. It impacts housing, employment, family, mental health, long-term. So what about what happens for those people? Once we actually have it, it can expand when you think about other departments, so I already know that in the city of Ypsilanti, they also are starting to consider these because it's already being considered by the sheriff's department. And so that's something, and Flock, as we already heard, is, is going to continue to push their product. And so once it's in a certain location and area, that this will become a market for them. And then if they have new technologies, they will then also try to sell the township and others that. When talking about that, the sheriff's department would not use it for immigration, that does not mean that ICE will not use it for immigration. And once these are used, then all the departments start to look for efforts of where is this actually? And we know that ICE is alive and well in our area, and so that's something to be considered. What if it's actually not useful, right? How long will we have to last with the LPRs? And also, would it just escalate to say, well, this didn't work, we need to find something else that works, and that we already had a policy, so we just create a new policy? Again, people already talked about what does major crime mean? Is it just murder or misdemeanor? How does that get detailed? What is the process in public accountability for adding more crime types? So if there's only a limited kind of things that the sheriff's department will use, what actually happens if they decide to expand it? Can there be political pressure, et cetera, to do more? Again, how do they know when to take a picture? What, they would have to be constantly scanning in some way? Because you don't know, the car could have passed by, by the camera, so it seems that the camera would have to capture the car before it passes through there. The survey, you know, hearing about the, you know, I think it's interesting that an option that seems to be the most open, that can be shared to people most widely, is not being weighed as seriously as meetings that might seem more closed or that can be more controlled in terms of who shows up to them. So I think that's really interesting. I can't wait to see the results of it. But I think that how we determine what, what voice matters also is important as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Erica Tebbins, Ypsilanti Township resident. I appreciate that there has, have been questions from the board and also community members around both the security of being able to log into the system and who has access, and accountability in case that access is abused. But I just wanted to say one more thing on that, that I would hope the board would consider in thinking about the importance of who has access, how that's audited, et cetera, is the fact that law enforcement has frustratingly, shockingly, high rates of intimate partner violence, and also protecting other officers and members of their community who are known perpetrators of intimate partner violence. And so I would just really hope that the board considers the fact that whatever oversight or security or accountability is happening, that there is at least some third party or something that is checking, because, as I was talking to my husband, we were talking about coming here and some of our concerns around it, the first thing that came to my mind is like, oh my gosh, the ability for somebody to go in and stalk a partner who just broke up with them, or who they're pursuing, or their partner's wife who wants a divorce, it just seems horrifically high that that could be a liability. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Doug, pardon me. I'm Doug Stout, I'm a resident of Ypsie Township. I've enjoyed a lot of your comments, and I've listened to them very carefully, but I won't apologize, I don't agree with what a lot of things I've heard this evening. I believe that the sheriff's office has made a determined effort to evaluate a tool that could be extraordinarily useful to our police department. I wasn't quick enough to ask, sir, but I would like to see if you could provide us with an analysis of what we'd expect, the effectiveness of this new tool, and why we would think it would be justified from a cost standpoint. It's difficult for me to believe that we would be at this point where the sheriff's department hasn't already done that. Further, the question I would have is how difficult, Mr. Jackson, how difficult would it be for an officer to determine if the offense is a serious one or not? Now, it would suggest to me, again, that a serious crime doesn't need to be a violent crime, but it has to be a felony. And I would also wonder if any, any self-respecting police officer would have any difficulty determining if this was a felony or misdemeanor. I don't understand that. So I thank you again for listening to me. I am deeply concerned for a lot of your issues, and I understand, I believe I understand them. But I'm also very committed to provide, to provide for our officers the absolute best tools available to them, despite the risks involved, which there could be many. But I would like to just go back to Mr. Jackson on this point, which is, we are at a point here where we are finding the correct balance, we hope, between something that could in fact be abused, but also offers what may be an extraordinarily powerful tool for our police department. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jonathan Hall, I'm relatively new to the Ypsilanti Township area, and just to sort of comment into this vein of like, what it is that we are considering, I'm concerned about the fact that there doesn't appear to be, as a new person who's like, finding my way around here, there doesn't, it doesn't appear to clear to me the reason why this proposal is being considered, and the data and information that went into saying in the outset, we might need to consider this tool as a way to reduce crime. So like, what are the crime rates, right? How have they gone up? Mr. Derek mentioned that people are concerned about violent crime being on the rise, or crime being on the rise. Where's the data to support that? Where is the data that shows, the information that shows that this particular system is effective in reducing crime? That's not available, I don't think that that's readily available. There is a plethora of research that, that talks about policing, that talks about surveillance, and I'm, I'm not a scholar in that area, but it seems to me that the consensus around the research around heavy surveillance shows that it does not reduce violent crime, it does not reduce misdemeanor crime, it does not reduce the things that people say they're concerned about, and oftentimes, we say that we're concerned about things, but we don't actually, that's not actually based on information that we can all consider and agree upon. So I would like to see from, I mean, I'm sure the sheriff's department has done their research and everything like that, but I'm concerned that there's no other bodies that are, sort of have the authority, that has the pulse and the data on, like, this is going to be an effective proposal. Like, do you all, sitting on the board, do you all have a handle on the research on surveillance, right? Have you done that? Where are, where's, where's the citations for that work? You know, it, I think it's great that in the proposal, there's, you know, another township that has this policy and this service in place, but where is the data that shows other townships and other municipalities who've rejected this policy, and why they rejected this policy? Right? And so like, I, these are things that I think need to be part of this consideration, that we should not just trust any entity that has authority over us, that they have our best interests in mind. There's a very easy way to make sure that we know that, and that's to present the data. So I would like to see, as a new resident, the, the data that conclusively shows that having this policy and this system in place is going to be effective, and one, that there's a need for it. Like, is this, is this proposal a solution looking for a problem?
Yeah.
I, I mean, and, and like, obviously, there, there are people here who agree, but like, there's, there's a very simple way to do this, and this is to present the data, right? There's a very simple way for us to get to this consensus. We all sort of like, feel a certain way about these things, and I think that's important, but it can be data-driven, and I don't see that data. And that's very concerning to me, regardless of like, all the other steps that have to go into making sure that there's oversight, making sure that officers aren't abusing this system, making sure that certain communities aren't overpoliced. I don't even think, I mean, again, I don't even think we're at that point because I, I have no idea what we're talking about and why this is like, necessary. So I, I think like, in moving forward, the policies that are available to all of the residents needs to show, these are the reasons why this policy is being put forward, this is the data that supports this, this is the policy and how it's played out in other municipalities, these are the results of having those things. And then all of us residents can make a decision, regardless of, or not, not regardless, but including how we might feel individually about our communities and about law enforcement and all these other things. I think we need to cut through that and have some concrete reasons. And the board needs to do this separately from the sheriff's department, right? It does not need to be a conversation with the sheriff's department saying, here, board, we've done this, these things. I mean, I'm not saying that the sheriff's department is doing anything necessarily nefarious, but I think there needs to be these independent sources of information gathering so we can all make a decision. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, my name is Marshall Avril, I am a resident of Ypsie Township, I have both a statement and a question. I personally, and it sounds like there's some questions being brought up, about the efficiency of surveillance technology, I would much rather be here having a conversation about the things we can do to actually reduce the crime in our community, that would be far more helpful. And my question is, I'm curious as to where we are at in looking for vendors? I've heard some names tossed around, and similar, similarly to the point that I think my friend over here was getting to, I'm curious as to the genesis of this conversation. I've heard a lot about the about the, 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 what we are going to use these for, but I have not really heard a whole lot about why we are looking into surveillance technology to prevent crime. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Arlo Kaiser. I'm a Ypsilanti Township resident, and I think it's sad that people do not want our community to help the police, keep us safe. Our township, if I remember correctly, is 32 square miles and we have, um, 32 police officers, and that is for 24 hours a day. They cannot be every place. These readers will help them. And our police officers, I trust my police officer. I trust him with my life. And, well, you laugh. Be my guest. We trust them. That's why we hire them. Where would you be if you didn't have police officers? There's no place that is perfect. And it's interesting to see how many people are here. Nine times out of 10, there's only one or two people here at the board meetings. And, um, you say about privacy and that kind of stuff. How much, how many of you, y'all have cell phones?
Ms. Kaiser.
I'm sorry, I.
Address their comments.
Everybody has cell phones and how can you be tracked on cell phones? So what's the difference? And I appreciate the board for everything they do. The police, the police officers can only do so much to protect us, and we have to help them and give them the tools that will protect us.
Thank you.
Hi, Alicia Dyer. I live at 7259 Warwick in Ypsilanti Township. I am also a former deputy sheriff with the Washington County Sheriff's Office. Um, something that hasn't brought up that I want to touch on that I think is extremely concerning is the error rates, um, some as high as 10% for some of these vendors. When the tech provides a false hit in a deputy, let's say a new deputy executes a traffic stop for a stolen vehicle, this then becomes a high-risk felony stop where officers call out the passengers by gunpoint, only to then find out the technology failed and misread the plate and, and the technology told them it was a stolen car hit when it wasn't, and improperly read the plate. This puts deputies and the community in potentially extremely dangerous situations. This has happened with the license plate reader technology before nationally, where a family was pulled out at gunpoint only to find that the, uh, the tech was wrong and the car wasn't actually stolen. You can't guarantee this won't happen in Ypsilanti Township with this technology. Even Police One articles that are tailored for the police say the tech error rates are extremely concerning. What happens when a deadly force situation happens in Ypsilanti Township and someone is killed on a traffic stop only to find out later, the technology misread the plate and the stop was not even justified? We know that traffic stops can be extremely dangerous and a hit from a hot list can be wrong. Deputies might be told to double check, but that hasn't always happened in the past. People make mistakes. Ultimately, the sheriff said that he will use this technology if the township pays for it. At this point, I'm asking the township board to say no. You heard from the sheriff's office that the majority of the community doesn't want this. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Um, what I have to say, my, uh, Brian Geringer. I live on the other side of the moat, if you will. Um.
What does that mean? I'm sorry.
City.
In the city of Ypsilanti.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, yes. Um, the moat that you are planning to create with your, uh, web of surveillance is what I was referring to. Um, so I did want to just tell everyone, first of all, that this whole meeting, I've been live streaming it on What's Left Ypsilanti, the Facebook page. So you can, um, I wish I could have said that sooner, but you can go look at, back on it. It'll be posted. Um, I don't think you should do this. Um, it seems like no one really thinks you should do this. Um, and I think, yeah, I don't have notes, but I, I really just, um, wonder why I just see the same thing happening over and over again, where there's like, you know, the, the police are, you know, they're getting better with their words and they're like saying really nice things and they're talking about how, you know, this isn't going to fix the problem. But at, at the end of the day, you're talking about putting money into the police department for new fancy tools, which are always overused, which always make mistakes, which are always hurting black and brown and poor neighborhoods the most, always. So what are we doing here? And, uh, I'm just curious, cause, uh, you know, I live in Ypsilanti. I talked to Ypsilanti City Council a lot, and there was once a great presentation from the attorney of Ypsilanti, John Barr, where he talks about how the, the power works in this whole dynamic, um, which by the way, this room is scary. I feel like I'm on trial. Anyway, um, but so what I'm thinking is that like, people who are on this board, who are here right now and seeing all this, who are hearing from, uh, Mr. Jackson, that the people responding to the survey overwhelmingly do not want this. If you vote for this, why would anyone want you to be representing them?
Thank you. And that's going to conclude the public comments on this issue because we do have a very long agenda and we have to continue with the other agendas. We thank everyone for coming out. We, um, wrote down the questions and we will answer the questions and notify people who attended of other meetings that will be held within the community. So this just, we're not voting tonight.
How will that notification occur?
We're, we are not voting tonight on it. And if you're a township resident, you said you were a township resident, we can notify you that we're at the meeting today.
Yeah, I didn't see a sign and sheet.
The next item on our agenda is a water and sewer rate changes proposal by Luther Blackburn, who's a YCUA director.
Good evening Supervisor Stumbo and members of the board. Uh, the agenda item before you tonight is a request for consideration to increase the water and sewer rate in the township by 4%. Uh, this item will be brought to the YCUA Board of Commissioners on, uh, Wednesday, August 24th for their consideration and City Council next Tuesday. Um, included in your board packet is a breakdown of the details of the increase in the water bill for a township resident. It is approximately $3.81, uh, and that's based upon a average usage of 10 units of water for a customer. Um, the, the, the main drivers or purpose for the water rate increases is a continued recovery from COVID.
Could you guys shut the door, please, so we can hear? I'm sorry, Luther, I can't hear with all the chatter. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you. Uh, I did also forget to mention, here with me is, uh, Mr. Dwayne Harrigan. He's the YCUA Finance Director and is also available to answer any questions or details regarding YCUA's budget. Uh, the main drivers behind the 4% increase in water and sewer rates i- is of course a recovery for the Water Department from COVID. Uh, it had a significant impact on water usage, uh, within the department. Uh, definitely rising inflation, 40-year record highs, uh, impact, uh, costs for fuel, uh, utilities such as, uh, electricity and natural gas, uh, for the plant, um, and, and those type of items. Uh, also a continued commitment by YCUA to invest in our capital infrastructure, uh, such as our water and sewer main, uh, repair projects and improvements at the wastewater treatment plant are the major components and reasons for the increase in water and sewer rates.
Questions from our board members?
I, I, I was reading the, uh, information and I, I read, I read where Ann Arbor had an 11.5% increase and other communities have had increases. And I understand that, uh, you know, it costs more and, and it, it, it costs more for you all, so it, it's passed down to us. Uh, but I do think that the, uh, amount that you're, uh, requesting is in comparison to the other communities, it's, you know, reasonable. Not that anybody ever wants to pay more, but in consideration.
We appreciate that.
Madam Chair. Um, Luke, I, um, or Director Blackburn, I know that I had tried to ask a question about it before the board meeting, but I unfortunately wasn't able to understand that fully. So in our water ordinance in the township, normally we just, as long as it's within the Great Lakes pass-through, it just occurs according to our ordinance language. So if I'm understanding this correctly, and Dwayne, maybe this is more for you for the numbers part of it, but this is above and beyond what the Great Lakes water pass-through would be. Do I understand that?
That is correct. The way the ordinance reads is, uh, YCUA purchases water from essentially Great Lakes Water Authority, formerly the Detroit Water and Sewerage Department. And the way the ordinance reads that it, that the YCUA Board of Commissioners has the ability to approve, to approve a water rate increase equal to or lesser than that of, uh, Detroit or GLWA, as it's commonly referred to now. What YCUA is proposing this year for consideration is an increase that is above that increase. So the increase from GLWA this year was 3.1%. We are proposing a 4% water increase, so nine tenths higher than that of the GLWA increase.
And, uh, just a follow-up question, it's sort of a two-part question is, one is I, if I'm understanding correctly, the YCUA Board has not met to discuss this yet or has not voted to support this yet. And then a second part to that would be just the understanding of why you're asking for more than just the Great Lakes pass-through.
You are correct. The YCUA Board of Commissioners has not met, and for this, uh, item, they will meet next week. Um, this is typically the timeline we follow due to the number of board meetings we have to attend for second reading and to try to get this, uh, any type of rate increase passed. Uh, our fiscal year kind of goes into effect and we're already paying the increase right now from GLWA. So that would be one item. Uh, the other drivers for the increase, as I mentioned, uh, are utilities. Uh, we're seeing record-high increases in fuel for our fleet and, uh, usages for generator. They also use fuel and/or natural gas, uh, wage increases, uh, for staff, um, chemical increases at the wastewater treatment plant, uh, and then again, continuing to try to invest in the infrastructure within the utility, such as water and sewer mains and equipment and process equipment at the treatment plant. Yep, go ahead. Dwayne has it.
I was just going to add one thing to that about the, um, the finance committee that last month, and they are recommending this to the board, which will be next week.
That was Dwayne Harrington from YCUA for the person who does the minutes. Other question?
Just one more. What would happen if the, uh, increase was not voted in?
If the increase was not voted in, uh, it, it would force us to go back and make some very, uh, difficult decisions. Um, I think the authority, probably around a decade ago during the economic downturn, had to make some significant staffing reductions. Uh, I don't think we've ever really significantly increased staffing since that time. In this year's budget, we are requesting two additional staff positions. Uh, but maintaining the water and sewer infrastructure, uh, in this region and in this area is only getting more difficult. Uh, it's aging infrastructure. So these are dollars that we need to maintain and provide the level of service that I think, uh, this utility does very well and above and beyond what other utilities do. And I think our rates, especially within the township, are extremely competitive. Um, so I, I would really like to avoid making those extremely difficult, uh, decisions regarding the levels of service that we provide to the community.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yes, um, Mr. Derrick, I sit on the water board, um, behalf of the township. One of the things is that this year, we had huge, uh, piping situations. Uh, I don't know if you remember on textile road, it was closed going bad with directions, but going out that way by the plant. Those guys were out there probably three months. Massive overtime, but it had to be done because it would have been a huge backup and we just don't want to see people's houses, uh, just being destroyed with sewage and stuff. We have a bigger problem. So that was a big, in, in, in bigger costs. Also, just by watching the chemicals that we use, I noticed and I've questioned it, uh, those chemicals has went up. And every time they can't get a regular price like we used to, it just goes up. And one of the things we do want is clean water. But also, I have to say, before my presence, uh, someone else sat on the board, uh, Brenna Stumbo, and we always try, and she always tries to keep that rate down. Um, and we're still lower, I think, than anybody else with this increase. But, you know, you hate to do it. Nobody likes to see, um, their bills go up, uh, water, whatever it may be. But I notice, uh, sitting on a financial committee is that there has been times that we have spent extra to get the job done. So I want to thank you for coming and I, I just want to put that explanation in. But be sure, we're still lower than many, many other cities. And I, I want you to verify that as you already have. Is that correct, Mr. Director?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other question? Trustee Swanson or?
So thank you for coming to us and giving us information. I know that earlier you've come to us or, um, Mr. Castro came to us and talked about some infrastructure and some bonding and some things. So I'd be interested in learning more about when I hear infrastructure is lumped into this increase. I'd be interested in learning more specifically about that because I know that you've been before us, before us before, um, talking about how we were planning for that infrastructure. And I know that making sure that the infrastructure is sound for residents is something that's really important to the whole board. And when you were here last time to talk to us. So it doesn't have to be necessarily today, but when I hear it lumped in with, um, maybe labor costs and some other things, I'd really like to parse out exactly what we're talking about with infrastructure.
Thank you, Trustee Swanson. Um, in the budget highlight document is a, a quick summary of some of the projects, capital projects that YCUA is planning to perform in the next fiscal year. Uh, upgrades to multiple water pump stations, a project at the wastewater treatment plant for the odor control system. Uh, the probable cost of those projects are listed in that highlight document that's part of the board packet. And all those projects, uh, I can come back into a presentation, but they're readily available on YCUA's website that are part of what's called our Drinking Water Revolving Fund Project Plan and State Revolving Fund Project Plan. So those are plans that we put together that have project descriptions and opinion of probable costs for typically the next three to five years. We submit those to the state of Michigan for consideration and, uh, loan forgiveness and, uh, low interest loans. And that is how a majority of YCUA's capital improvement projects proceed through that program for the most part. I hope that helps or answers your question.
What you're asking for when you include in this increase, part of some of the work that we've talked about before, or is it an addition to? I guess I'm trying to understand how it all fits together.
It is a component of, of the reason for the rate increase. The rate increase is a portion of the debt payments that we have to pay for the projects that we've performed and consideration of the projects that are coming up in this next fiscal year. It does not cover all the projects that are listed out in the next three to five years. I hope that answers the question.
One more thing, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, okay. Also, Luke, I don't know if you could just name a couple of companies, because this really is something to me. Maybe it's just the time it is with the coronavirus and everybody's going up and having problems getting materials. There's a couple of things, uh, that we use at Yucca, uh, that they have just really went sky high that we need, uh, products. Could you just name a few that maybe the company is not where they used to be and it, it really increased, uh, just to give an outline on it?
In regards, thank you, Trustee Peterson. Increases in costs for chemicals typically are centered around, uh, sodium hypochlorite. Since the pandemic, uh, the access to raw material chlorine has become extremely difficult. Um, we normally would procure, uh, a one-year contract with vendors after a bid process. We are currently unable to even procure a one-year contract. We're currently, uh, We're currently only working on quarterly prices that they can hold firm. So typically chlorine, we're seeing prices 30, 40% higher than we have in the past. And that's really across that whole industry, whether it's pool chemicals or anything that has, that basically uses chlorine as a base. Other increase in costs, of course, electricity. A lot of what YCUA does at the wastewater treatment plant is driven by electricity, whether it be through our incinerator and/or through blowers that we use to treat the wastewater. Those costs have, of course, gone up significantly.
I have a couple of questions, and we don't have very many minutes left to ask these questions, but usually, we have a work session and go through, and I apologize, Luke, we only, we didn't get to it sooner. But you do have Bridge Road Pump Station Improvements, .7 million, Textile Road Pump Station Improvements, 1.45 million, Clark Road Pump Station Improvements, .95 million, Wastewater Treatment Plant UV Disinfectant Improvement, 2 million, and Water Meter Improvement, 7.6 million. So I would, I know they're on your list of, what do you call it, when you, we did this years ago, where you identified the list of improvement, asset management?
Asset Management Plan, yep.
So it's part of that. But what I don't know, and I would like to talk more about, is, are you applying for grants? There's so much federal dollars available for a lot of these infrastructure improvements. And are you trying, and there's debt forgiveness on some of the older ones, is that correct? But not the new ones? I don't have enough information on that, and I'd like to get some clarity.
Based upon the information that I have, or I believe Dwayne has, most of the federal dollars that are, that are going to come through the recent changes are through these revolving fund project plans. As in other direct funding, I'm not familiar with it. I know we've had some conversations about applying for it, and that would not be until April of next year. I would say YCUA, being a regional authority, is very much in need of assistance when it comes to federal funding. In the 70s, when this plant, especially when the wastewater treatment plant was originally constructed, there was a lot of federal dollars that went toward the construction and, and helped keep the, the capital assets and so forth properly funded and replacement. We don't see that type of federal investment into the utility these days. It has basically fallen on the backs of these revolving fund project plans, which essentially are low-interest loans. We feel like, I'll speak for Scott Westover, our engineering manager, has done a great job to put YCUA in a position to receive these federal dollars, because that's essentially the way we understand it, where it will be funneled through these, the revolving fund project plans. Even projects that normally would not be considered in that project plan process, basically, we've been encouraged by the state of Michigan to place those projects into that system for consideration for scoring, because essentially, there's just an unusually high amount of federal dollars that's coming through right now, and that's, it's my understanding, that's how we will have access to it. So it's unknown. I hope that.
To answer one of your questions, answer one of your questions, it's going to be upcoming projects. You can't go backwards, but it'll be the new projects.
Okay, so no loan forgiveness on existing projects?
That's kind of like, we went through, what, 10, 15 years ago, with, you know, the project shovel on the ground, that, that phrase was coined. So you need to have projects ready to go, once you get loans forgiveness, or once that's established, and you can start these projects.
So loan, 100% loan forgive?
No.
I'm sorry, we, we only have three minutes before the board meeting, so if you don't mind, we're going to take a break and just at least go to the bathroom and resume with the regular meeting. And I do have just questions, and understand overall, you provided, but I didn't know how much of the 4% increase, what was going for the projects, what was going for the sewer rate, or, and it's the ready to, um, ready-to-serve rate that concerns me, because residents can control and control their budget by how many units they use, but that readiness to serve fee is on every single water and sewer bill that's combined. Is it combined? It's not combined. But that is a large amount of our bill now. It's like $16.80 and $16.09. Every bill, regardless if you use any water, that's the readiness to serve. So I wanted to talk about that a little bit more, but, like I said, we're going to have to adjourn this meeting, and five minutes to seven, and come back and have more conversation.